Good evening, and welcome to the June 23, 1915, Meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Joe Carpenter, and I serve as Vice Chair of the Board of Commissioners as well as Commissioner from the Crowthers Mountain Township. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Time, Water, Cable, and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I would like to present to you for your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on the far right with Commissioner Frayley.
Alan Frayley, Charriville Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, Southport Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Tom Keger, Gastonia Township.
Okay, if you would, I would ask you to alter your lines, and Commissioner Williams is going to do the invocation, and Mr. Chad Brown will do the lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and the beautiful day you've given us. Lord, we thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed upon our county. And, Lord, as we come upon the Fourth of July holiday, I pray that you would, Lord, just remind us of the great privilege that we have living here in the greatest nation of the United States of America. And, Lord, I pray that you would help us as county commissioners and leaders to make the decisions that would best benefit our community and the citizens of this county, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chairman Tracy Philbeck could not be here tonight, so I am filling in to chair this meeting. We have our first order of business is a public hearing, and this is to name some private drives, and I want to ask, let's see, we need to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Commissioner Keger, two seconds. Price, second. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, we're now in public hearing, and Sarah, do you want to come and explain to us these name changes? Oh, okay, excuse me, I didn't see the rules. Before we, we're already in public hearing, but let me outline the rules and procedures of the hearing. Citizen wishing to make comments will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the chair for response. The chair shall rule on all points of order during the public hearing. And we are now in public hearing. The first item is a name change of a road. The Commissioner will take comments on the naming of a private drive, name, private drive, and they want to name it an hourway, one hourway, located off Louis Drive. The name of the private drive, Bent Creek Drive, located off Sellers Town Road. And I'm going to ask Sarah Pendley, our Specialist Three, to provide a brief overview once she has completed her comment. Citizen can make their comment. Okay, Sarah, now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick items for your consideration tonight. The first, excuse me, the first being to name a private drive right an hourway. The property was, the property is located in the Dallas Township off of Louis Drive. It was presented to us by property owner petition bearing 100% signatures. The owner presented to staff her zoning permit, and it was discovered, for new construction on her property, and it was discovered that there were not enough available numbers left on Louis Drive to accommodate her. She also owns two parcels in that area, one of which has an existing home on it, so it would be in her best interest and the best interest for 911 to locate her more effectively if she were to name the private drive. This petition was forwarded to the Technical Review Committee and also the town of Stanley, since it's located partly within and partly outside of their ETJ, and no comments or concerns were returned. The Planning Board reviewed this matter at their scheduled meeting on April 28, and unanimously voted to recommend approval for your consideration. And that concludes item number one. The second item that we have is a petition to name a private drive as Bent Creek Drive. This property is located in the Charriville Township off of Sellers Town Road. The property owner presented to staff her new address. He has an existing home site on a large acreage, or a parcel of large acreage, and had previously been accessing his property via Sweetbrier Drive. And due to the recent purchase of a right-of-way coming off of Sellers Town, and an improvement to his property with that driveway that he installed, he requested that he name, be able to name the private drive as Bent Creek Drive to access his property and to accommodate for future development on his property. And this petition was reviewed by the TRC as well. No comments or concerns were returned. The Planning Board reviewed this petition on May 26, and they unanimously voted to approve recommendation for your consideration. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sarah. Is there any citizen wishing to comment on the naming of these two streets, roads? Seeing none, any questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the naming of private drive as Right an Hour Way and the naming of the private drive as Bent Creek Drive. Motion by Commissioner Price, second by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor? Okay, thank you, Sarah. Okay, the next item is to hear about our health plan, and I'm going to ask Martin Browder to close the program. Oh, excuse me, it's been a while since I chaired this meeting. We got to close this, but maybe I have a motion. Okay, you had a couple over here. All those in favor? Thank you. I think it was Frayley and Brown. Okay, now we're here from Martin.
Great, thank you so much for having me this evening. I'm here to give you an update on the medical plan, just to talk about the things that we've been looking at, what we considered for the budget cycle for this 1516 plan year coming up. So, if, the second slide on this, and I know it's small on your screens, this just sort of gives you a sense of who we are as a firm. We work with over 30 counties across the state. We have a significant amount of public sector business, and I think we do an excellent job of giving you all the options that are available to you and balance that against what we're seeing with other counties similar to you. On slide number three, this is the situation we were facing for this upcoming renewal. We were looking at about a 15% increase, or about a $2.7 million increase in funding. Of course, these types of increases are not sustainable. The medical plan, as a reminder, is very competitive with neighboring entities such as yourselves, and is important to retain employees and recruit employees here to Gaston County. The staff and Mark III, we looked at all the options possible and sought out the least painful solution that would fit both budget and benefits for the employees. So, on slide number four is sort of a brief four-year history. Going back to 2011, 2012, the plan ran well, it trended well, and was in the black about $800,000. In 1213, while the plan trended up, we were still in the black from a budgetary perspective, a little bit over $1 million. However, things changed in 1314. Claims were up about 19%, and we ended up underwater about a half a million dollars based on how we were budgeted. And unfortunately, 2014-15 is still seeing an increase in claims while not so big. We're still underwater based on how we're budgeted, and we had increased funding for the current year that we're in. Slide number five just compares the county's claims per member per month relative to the Blue Cross Book of Business. And you were better than the Book of Business in 1112, but in 1213, your claims were higher than the average county and city in the state, and in 1314, it was more or higher than the prior year. So it was trending in the wrong direction. Slide number six is, in many ways, a validation of the wellness strategies that you have improved, that you've approved for this upcoming year. This outlines with the top 15 episodes of health conditions here for the employees and dependents at Gaston County. And you'll see that diabetes is number one, chronic renal failure, or people who are on dialysis, was number two, hypertension or high blood pressure was number three, and heart disease was number four. All of these are a leading indicator for high claimants that you've seen and indicate that you've got an at-risk population relative to their health. Slide number seven is basically a, we work up the renewals, we help the staff understand what the renewals are going to be coming in at, we project them out about nine to 12 months out. All of this, and the top third of this, is all the costs that are going to be associated with the plan in 2015, 2016. The bottom line, as you're looking at almost a 15% increase, or about $2.7 million. What I do want to point out on the slide is if you look at the bottom, say quarter or bottom fifth of the page, these are costs that the county is currently not paying today via its not-paying state premium tax, which is approximately $360,000, and you're not paying the health insurer taxes associated with healthcare reform, or about a little over $500,000. So all told, by being self-funded, you're avoiding a little over $900,000 in cost. We also looked at what the equivalent cost would be on a fully insured basis. This is on slide number eight. The claims are the same, the revenue is the same, but you're adding in these costs that I just outlined that you have avoided by being self-funded. So you've added $900,000 of cost. A fully insured contract has higher expenses. The insurer, whether it's Blue Cross or Cigna, typically has more cost built into it, and you would essentially see at least, in our estimation, a double or twice the increase that you're seeing in percentage, and twice the increase in dollars. Most of our clients are self-funded. Those that have looked at transitioning to going fully insured have never found a competitive solution to being self-funded because you're avoiding all these taxes and expenses, and self-funding is the most efficient strategy to fund the health plan for your employees. Slide number nine, we looked at about five different options. We looked at the renewal as it stands today, which is again about a $2.7 million increase. We looked at plan changes, we looked at eligibility changes, which of course is one of the reasons why I'm here tonight. We looked at the funding changes, i.e. fully insured and self-funded, and combinations of all of those. Of the options that we looked at, option one, which is the one I'm going to describe in just a minute, was the one that we settled in on because it, one, it better fit the budget, it didn't have any plan design changes for employees, so you didn't have benefit changes or cost shipped back to the employees, and it saved the budget, essentially a million dollars by putting this in place for the 2015-2016 budget. Slide 10, I'll just give you a brief breakdown of what all these mean. The one in the middle, the renewal, is unchanged for benefits, unchanged for eligibility, unchanged for the spouse discussion, which we're going to talk about in just a second. So essentially, that is, that's what we've just talked about. It's a $2.7 million increase in the middle. On the right, option one, had no plan design changes, but did do a dependent eligibility audit, and also include a change in spouse eligibility. Again, this option saved the plan about $1 million, and that savings not only was on the county side, but was on the employee side as well, in that premiums didn't go up as much for this change. Slide number 11 is, we looked at option two, we actually looked at what would be the cost if we shifted more of the burden to employees via premiums that they pay for dependents. And to get to essentially an 84% paid by the county and 16% by the employee as compared to where today, basically 84.6% of the cost is paid by the county and 11.4% is paid by the employee, to get that shift of about 4%, it would raise employee premiums by 52%, which of course we didn't see that as a viable option, and it still included those spouse eligibility changes and the dependent eligibility audit that we talked about. One of the things that we did do on a positive basis this year for employees that I didn't talk about on the prior slide is we changed employee child coverage to employee children coverage, so that employees today, if they want to cover two or more children, they have to take family coverage. What we're doing this year is extending employee child to employee children. They don't have to take family coverage anymore. They can take that now as that employee children rate, and it's exactly the same cost as what they're paying for employee child today. Option three, we looked at plan design changes, which you see highlighted in yellow, raising the co-pays, raising the deductible to $2,000 on the PPO plan, and actually putting a front-end deductible, which is very painful, on pharmacy. That also included the eligibility changes that we talked about. It got us to no funding increase, but again, staff and Mark III were interested in maintaining the benefits to the best of our ability for your employees. And then finally, on slide number 12, option four is if we did option three with benefit changes, but we didn't employ the spouse eligibility change, what would that be? And we'd be looking at about a $1.5 million increase. So, on slide number 13, what we settled in on for the budget, and what is in the budget today, is option one. While we know it is painful, it is the best solution that we found available to maintaining benefits for the entire population that remained, to have a budget impact, to meet budget, and to also mitigate premium increases for the employees. If you want to go back to the renewal, the original renewal, then that means that the county's going to have to find $1 million of increased funding to pay for it. So today, it's not in the budget. If you would say, well, we want to go back to the original plan, no spouse eligibility changes, then you've got to come up with $1 million that's not in the budget today. And it's not just a one-time appropriation, it's a million dollars every year going forward because we bumped it up unless we change it in the future date. So, one of the driver behind all this is not the eligibility changes that we've talked about necessarily, but the fact that the health of the population is not going well. The Commissioners, as I mentioned before, approved a wellness strategy going into the 1516 plan year, and it validates the fact that you approved the efforts to try to improve the health of the employed population. And then, finally, while the spouse eligibility change is a challenge, there are other, as you probably saw in the Charlotte Observer article, there are other municipalities and counties that are employing this strategy as well. It's strictly, it's a way to provide affordable benefits, good benefits, for what is really what the plan is, is an employee benefit. You want to provide coverage for dependents, but in the end, it's an employee benefit, and it's a proven strategy, and it's being employed. There is a county in the state that actually ended spouse coverage altogether this current year, and this is nothing that dramatic. So, we understand that it's painful, we are empathetic to the fact that it's a challenge. We certainly know that there are going to be people who are covered by the plan that would like to stay the way it is, but going into the 1516 budget, we're sourced or budgeted at the option one strategy, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, just to clarify before we move forward, what we approved is option one.
Yes, sir.
That's in our budget right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other, any question? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming tonight. I guess my question along the lines of what you're talking about, how many of the ones that you are currently working with, and this percentage-wise is roundabout, are self-funded? And my second question to that, how many are using the same option that we have available that we've put in place?
Yeah. About 80% or more of our clients are self-funded. It is on a client-by-client basis whether this strategy is an option or not. It depends on how the claims are structured, how the premiums are structured. I would say probably 20% of our customers are on, have already done this or doing it right now, so it's a smaller percentage. And the determining factor is how heavy of a subsidy, if you will, that the employer is providing for the employees. What maybe employees don't recognize, and maybe those that leave understand, is that the county is, has done a great service to the employees by having very low dependent premiums. Not every county operates that way. There are groups where the family premium's going to be $600 or $700 or higher. But when you have a very competitive premium structure like you have today, then naturally you're going to pull dependents onto your plan. And if you look at claims activity, the highest claimants that you have are retirees on average, the second highest are spouses. And so when you pull those spouses on and you're not charging enough to cover a claim activity, then you're going to get a situation like you have today whereby this strategy makes sense and can bring real value to the renewal process.
My next question, I guess, would be for you and Pam somewhere in the future, please. Can you guys sit down, outline ways that we can find ways to save money rather than our, we know if the wellness plan is part of that, what other factors? You guys see it every day, we don't get to see it every day. Can you outline something and put it together for the Commission to see what we can do to try to implement to drive that cost back down?
Absolutely. We'd be happy to meet with you whenever it's convenient for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a way to determine, I'm trying to find which slide it was, the one where you, I believe it was slide 11 where you mentioned the increase that would have to occur from the employee side of things to keep, if they wanted to keep the coverage?
No, slide 11, and that's, it was option two. One of the things that has occurred over the last several years, and again, kudos to the staff, as we've had funding increases over the last several years, employees may not recognize or understand that the county has been increasing its funding towards the health plan, pretty much every year for the last four or so years at least. What has been going on is, historically, the rule was an 85-15 or 80-20 split, 80-20, I think, was the split, where the county would pay for 80% of the cost of the health plan, and employees would pay for 20%. Well, what has occurred is, as the county has increased its funding and to help employees, employees haven't been increasing their cost alongside consistently. So what you've got is an imbalance in that we're not matching up with the 80-20 split. We're now 88.4% is borne by the county, I think I got my math right, and yeah, 88.6, and 11.4% is borne by the employee. So what option two was, was how much damage or how hard is it going to be to try to rebalance it to some degree? Not to get to the whole way, but to actually get more in line with what historical contribution strategies have been. So what option two was, was, okay, if we want to try to get more in balance with what has historically been the case, that is, get the employee funding more in line, and that would take some of the burden off of the county, it was a dramatic increase in premiums, so dramatic that, you know, we understand that it's, that would be massively painful for the employees, as does the staff. You know, this was sort of an exercise the staff asked me to perform.
But if, if an employee wanted to sustain the coverage and pay that differential, do we have a way for them to do that and keep the coverage?
No, but let me tell you why. So we've also gone through this, this exercise or this evaluation for other clients, and I can just, just looking and knowing your claims. The question is, so if we wanted to charge the employees for spouse coverage, the appropriate or correct rate, what would it be? Well, it would be essentially quadruple to maybe quintuple the number that you're charging today. I will tell you that you probably can't charge enough to fix the problem by just charging premium, but if you said, okay, well, to cover your spouse, it's not 200, say, 26 bucks right now, it's $1,000. Well, of course, nobody's going to take it, and nobody can afford it. So trying to do a surcharge of some nature will not get you the desired effect of rate relief or increased relief going into the 1516 year. Get out of here.
That's all. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Martin, thanks for coming tonight. So we talked about being fully insured, and you put the slide up about that, and I think you said something about that was a hypothetical calculation. When's the last time we ran the numbers and got a quote on a fully insured plan?
The last time we did a fully insured plan was probably when we marketed the plan, which is maybe three, four years ago. But I can tell you, we're doing this every year, and in the most recent year, for a group your size, similar size, Robinson County, similar in many respects, the fully insured quote was 20% higher than the self-funded numbers. Every year, my supervisor, so I appreciate you all being nice to me, in the back, she's doing an evaluation on me this evening, she is marketing the plans, she's marketing self-funded plans to fully insured contracts every year, and it is a hypothetical, but I promise you, it'll be so expensive, you can't do it. And that could be, that could be a project that we could work on next year, saying, okay, we're going to market the plan, we're going to look at self-funded and fully insured options. But, you know, I've been here 27 years, and it just, on a group your size, you're not going to come out better. But we would be happy if, so if we, if you're looking for it, we'll be happy to market the plan, look at both self-funded and fully insured options, and be happy to give you the comparison that you're looking for.
Are there counties or cities or companies our size that do have fully insured plans?
No, sir.
None?
None, I know of no county that is your size that has a fully insured None, I know of no county that is your size that has a fully insured contract. It would be, the groups that I'm aware of would be a third your size.
Okay.
That are fully insured.
All right, well, you know, I think to Commissioner Brown's point, I mean, it's really, I don't want to oversimplify, but it's really a simple formula. It's premium paid in minus claims is how much it costs us to...
Plus administration, correct.
Plus, yeah, I'm sure you want to include administration.
Not my administration, somebody's going to have to pay the claims.
Plus administration. I think there has to be a time where we address things beyond simple claims plus administration equals the total cost. And I know we benefit from the Blue Cross affiliation and the discount we get, I guess, from that, which is substantial.
Yes, sir.
But I hope the wellness plan will be beneficial, I think it will. Time will tell, but I'm confident that it will. Have we really taken another look, Pam, Earl, and I know it still may be in its infancy, at a narrow network with Caramont, and I know we're in the process of that, but where are we at in that process? Because that's got the potential to save a ton of money if we can put together the right plan.
Earl, you go.
We're in the process of exploring that option. I'd say we're several months away from having any definitive answers in terms of how much that might be able to save us. But certainly, that's, I think, one of the most viable options we have in terms of cost-saving potential.
I would agree with...
Let me inject something here. If we're, if we're looking at that, I would suggest that you look at if any citizen within the county wanted to go into that program where we were dealing directly with the hospital on there, see if there's some options there.
Well, I think the way Caramont, I'm sorry, but I think the way Caramont would structure a plan like this is they do a risk assessment. So, it's not just a general pool, but they base it off of your claims history and things of that nature. So, they're assessing the risk when they, is that, is that the way, Pam? Yeah. So, I don't know that we could just open that up, because I think they look at that. But I think that could be big for us, and so hopefully, in the coming months, we can, we can take another step in that direction. I know, I saw renal failure was $600,000. You know, it's kind of an outlier, that may not be many people. I know if you have, you know, renal failure, the cost can go up. So, I don't know that that's really, you know, the right thing to put up as a, you know, one of our most common issues, hypertension, diabetes, clearly are things we need to work on, that I think we can work on through that wellness plan. But anyway, it's frustrating, but I guess it is what it is, Mark. I appreciate it very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Friday, did you have anything to...
Not right now.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask also, with a plan our size, I wouldn't say it's probably small by figures of what it is, can we not find a way to contract or broker better administration fees from whomever, whether it be Blue Cross, A, B, C, D, whoever company? How does that work? And would we be able to leverage our size to drive that cost down? Or is that even an option in the way it goes?
So, you're, the lion's share of your cost of your claims, administration makes up a small percentage of your total cost. To address the question about, which is really a direct contracting idea behind maybe what the discussions are with Caramont, we did this year with another county of similar size, maybe half, we did a direct contracting deal directly with a hospital. It was Biden. And the savings, there were better discounts on the table, but there were also administrative savings as well. But it wasn't, it was, it was important and it was substantial, but it would not have eliminated the challenge that you face today. They still saw an increase in funding. But we're, we're happy to sit down and talk to you about the direct contracting. But back to your question, without having it in front of me, I would say that your administrative costs are somewhere in the neighborhood of 7%, 8%.
And that wasn't to say, what, that was just more or less to say, is that something that we could take as a driver?
Absolutely.
To try to drive it down? And also, I guess, I don't know how HIPAA would work with this. Can we get a breakdown of where those claims are coming, whether it's, and I said age breakdown of 60 and over, 40 to 60, is that?
Oh, yeah.
And basically, just sort of see how that's, because like I said, every year that our, we give a increase to our employees, it's always outstretched by the insurance. So, I was just trying, like I said, I don't know, you guys are smart at what you do. I don't like getting into this, I just like options to where I can see it, intangible options, that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, and your, your high claim range is 50 to 60. That's where the highest claims traffic is, people in my bandwidth, 54.
Okay, Commissioner Friday?
I do have one question, and somebody may have asked this in a different way, but it's a million dollars extra if we decide to keep it the way it is, or the way it was. Is that going to be the same if we set all new hires, you know, they're not eligible for the coverage? Is that going to continue to be a million each year?
Yes, sir, for the near future, yes, sir.
Okay. At some point, it would have to start dropping off as people started coming off the policy, the ones that are currently on there.
Yes, sir.
Right.
But not in the near term.
So, you're thinking one, two, three, four, five years, or is there any way to really tell?
You know, you've got great tenure, you don't have a lot of high turnover here.
Right.
You're probably talking about a decade of, before you roll through a lot of the people. And so, it was going to be a while before you can change grandfather, if you will, the existing population and the existing plan, and then say, okay, well, going forward, this is what the, in this case, the spouse eligibility is going to be? Yeah, it's not going to help us in the near term.
How many employees do we have, Pam, that will be affected by this immediately? Do you know offhand?
Well, we are getting a report every Wednesday from Impact Interactive that is conducting the dependent eligibility audit. So, I'll actually have new numbers tomorrow, but the numbers we received last week, we only have 415 spouses on our plan. Just for information, they account for 20% of our medical spend. We had 48% of the people with dependents on the plan who had completed the dependent eligibility audit. We found 98 spouses who were no longer eligible. So, we're anticipating that that number would double.
Right.
Maybe a little bit more. So, we're thinking a few hundred people, so maybe half or a little bit more than half of the 415 spouses that we have on the plan. And just also, so you know how it's going with the dependent eligibility audit, we have also found some overaged children who are not eligible for the plan, and we have found some employees who were legally separated from their spouses that had their spouses on the plan. So, it's not just, it's not just the spouses for this, for this, we're also finding other dependents that are not eligible for the plan.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay.
One second, Pam.
Okay, Commissioner Brown.
And how many of those were there that were causing this to be, and what are we doing about that?
Well, they are no longer eligible for our plan. They will be removed from the plan.
They never were eligible.
Yeah, they never were eligible.
Well, let's go back to a different side of this. What are we doing about it?
Well, the dependent eligibility audit really is the thing we're doing about it. And part of the reason, and I hope everybody understands this, that we're doing the dependent eligibility audit, independent of the spousal carve-out, is that in 2015, we are going to be listing, in accordance with the Affordable Care Act, we are going to be listing every employee's dependents and their social security numbers on their W-2 forms. So, it was very important for us to make sure that everybody who's on our plan that's listed as a dependent is eligible to be on the plan. So, this is what, this is why we were doing that.
And I guess my question is now, can we get a number of how much that has cost the county taxpayers to, and I know that's going to be hard to get, but I just think that that's...
It's a problem.
It's a little different side for me, and I don't, I don't see that very well.
It's a, it is a problem, and this is why we are addressing it.
Thank you.
You have anything? Commissioner Keger?
I really, I'm just going to throw out something that you'd mentioned. Now that we have these, we're paperless and we have to use these all the time, I was able to multitask. You brought up Robeson County, Robson County?
Yes, sir.
I always say robe, my wife says rob, but it's R-O-B-E, I put on a bathrobe, not a rob. But what was the significance that you brought them into this discussion?
Uh, let's see.
You'd said something about equality, and, you know, you said that they were a good example to use versus Gaston County for something or another?
Oh, fully insured. So, they asked us, you know, they're, they're really budgeted, you know, they're challenged from a budgetary standpoint, and...
But they're not doing...
Oh, they are, doing the dependent eligibility audit.
Okay.
They're doing the dependent eligibility audit. They're not doing the spousal eligibility change that was put on the table. Their renewal came in very well this year, so they deferred. They're doing the dependent eligibility audit, but they're not doing the spousal eligibility change.
What?
But the fully insured was the reason, that was the reason why I brought up Robinson, is because they looked at both fully insured and self-funded, and we've done that with, for them several different times, and every time, the fully insured contract is way more expensive than a self-funded basis.
I've been told all my life that size makes a difference. We're significantly larger in population and numbers of employees. Would that not be a real important factor in getting something like this accomplished?
Fully insured?
Mm-hmm.
You also have more claims.
Okay.
You have bigger, you have a higher level of claim activity.
On their website, I just pulled up their benefits, families and spouses are still eligible there as of...
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we didn't change, the discussion was fully, was funding strategy, not whether there was a spousal eligibility change there.
I don't know if, my last question, and I want to just bring up a couple of items.
Okay, if I can make one point, their deductible for their PPO plan is either $2,500 or $3,000, where you're at $1,500 for your employees. So, it's, it's not half...
$1,500 for an employee, $3,000 for the family.
For a family, yes, but I mean, your plan is so much better than theirs.
But see, even if we tweak these things, well, that's, I'll get into that later. The other question I had was, I don't know if Pam answers it or you can, would it make any difference if, can you offer, can you tell employees, could we keep the spouses on HSA, on the savings accounts? Or do we have to legally give them the option? I mean, we offer the PPO, we offer the savings account.
Right.
Would it benefit the county financially if they were only able to use the savings account?
No, not for the claim issues that we have.
Okay, and, all right. I'm just going to take about three or four minutes and make a couple of comments, and I'll be through on the subject. I just have a real problem, and I know it's going to be a million dollars, but, you know, we hired people under the pretense that they'd have this. One of our employees, and Pam was gracious enough to get me some numbers, averages on all this, the average employee got about a $1,300 or $1,400 raise this year. I talked to one employee who's a little above the median income, his salary, and this is something that I didn't give a lot of thought to till after I've heard it. This person's spouse works for a mom and pop, like four or five people in the company, I believe, and they do offer insurance. To quote him, it's garbage. His premiums would be $500, give or take, more a month than what they're paying now. His co-pays were going to go up, his annual deductible was going to go up significantly, and they weren't going to be able to use the doctors that his, his wife used now. I mean, it's just not about some dollars and cents to me. This is, that guy got a, maybe he got about $1,500 raise if the average was 14. $500 more a month, that's $6,000 a year. Subtract his raise of $1,400, $1,500, he's losing $4,500 if we do this. And that, I just can't, I can't swallow that pill, because we hired these folks, and I'm all ready to stop that benefit now for future hires, but I just can't look at an employee and say, you know, we gave you this benefit when you came, and that's probably one of the, you know, one of the many reasons that you took the job. And, and I will bow out of the vote if, you know, the attorney, I've mentioned it to a few of you, I've got a family member that works for the county, and I've not discussed this with that person at all intentionally. But if I shouldn't vote in, on the issue, I won't if it comes to a vote, but I'm getting a strong feeling that we may not even get to a vote on this thing. But personally, I would like the board to consider funding it. You know, I've been following the reversions for a lot of years, and we've gotten as much as 14 million back in a given year. When we hear from staff, with all due respect, that, you know, it's going to be tough. Alan, Joe, Mickey, you've been here for a good number of years with me, and we've heard how it's not going to be able to happen. And every year, it happens. You know, we're able to pull out the miracle, and I'm just optimistic enough to think that, you know, if we've gotten eight, 12, 14 million back that wasn't used the previous year that we expected to use, that maybe we can do that this year. And, you know, we've got some added income coming in from Caramont that's supposed to be used for health type issues. And, you know, we went a number of years without giving our employees raises. We did give them a small Christmas bonus a couple times without raises, but, you know, I don't want to, it's just something that we committed when they hired, and we're going to take it away, it doesn't sit right. And, you know, this board was willing to give ourselves health insurance when we left And now, we're wanting to take benefits away from the employees, and most of these folks are going to take a pretty big hit, even though they got a pay raise this year, it's going to cost them a lot. This one example was about $4,400, and that's without higher co-pays or deductible. So, that said, I hope we can, you know, do something to keep the employees whole. We've taken from them before, we've held back raises, and I think the community as a whole want good employees. I've talked to two directors recently, and they, they've both lost a fair number of employees, primarily for financial reasons. And if somebody's going to take a hit of $3,000, $5,000 a year, I'm going to expect they're going to be looking. And there is a, there's a bunch of corporations, businesses, looking for employees right now. It's, it's the biggest boom since '06 or '07. So, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll stop there and see where the board takes it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. I had a couple, back to your slide four, and I was trying to get a picture of where this thing is going, and this, these increases just don't stop with this year. I noticed that for some reason, in 1112, we come out to the good. I don't know what the circumstances were on that, but since then, we've been, been going down, up...
Yes, sir.
On the claims, but... On the claims, but, and this year, we're already into, we got $434,000 that we are below what our budget plan called for.
Yes, sir.
So, that's a trend, and then, of course, you scale on the others, shows a distinct line of increase. And so, in my estimation, we're not gonna be able to continue that. We can't sustain this. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So, I think it has, this has to do with so much of what's going on in this nation on healthcare costs. Between the medical providers, that includes everybody, insurance and drug companies, attorneys thrown into the bunch. But that's a cost that is, just continues to escalate. Chuck, no, 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 I'm not pointing. But it's just the fact that that's happening, and we're having to deal with it here. And not here, I've had to deal with it, or my son has in business now, he's running. And it's, it's just as bad, the cost there. They're going with some very high deductibles to even have some insurance coverage, cover the major stuff. And so, I think as a commission, we're gonna have to deal with it here based on what our employees are insured for. Mr. Kegger, I understand, and it's tough, but I've already had to make those tough decisions in business several years before now. And so, anyway, Commissioner Price?
Thank you. I think the board has raised some good points tonight, each of us. I've listened and I understand basically where everybody's coming from. What I'm, what I'm willing to do is fund the million dollars for another year. That'll give our employees a timetable in which to find other coverage somewhere. It'll give us a chance to work out an agreement with Caramont. It'll also give us another year to get the audit data finalized of how many people we actually have to cover in a plan and who's eligible. So, for me, I don't know how long the employees have had to think about this, consider this, but I do think it is an expense the county cannot sustain on an ongoing basis. But I'm, I'm willing to go another year and allow these other things to take place to see what happens later on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else on this issue? Commissioner Freyler?
I think it's a pretty good thought, Mr. Price. I probably would be willing to support that. Mark, are there any other adverse effects from doing what Commissioner Price is talking about to this plan, if we were to do that one more year?
I mean, other than maintain the claims level that you've got and the cost, no. I mean, it's just, you know, where the money comes from, but... Sure, I mean, you've got the claims you've got now, and you'll continue to have those claims, and those claims are going up. But, no.
Well, we could trend down, and some of the people that we know are on the plan now that are not even eligible will definitely be coming off. And, you know, who knows where we'll be at this point next year? And it will give us a year to do all the things Commissioner Price was talking about and give people better options to plan. Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Brown has something else.
I just had one more question, and it slipped my mind after we started thinking about what it was, because I was trying to get your attention. As we move through this, and I know that I've asked you to do a lot of things future-wise, I would also like to see where we stand on those people coming off and those people coming back up. The million dollars, I brought that up earlier, pretty before we'd go, but I wanna see... I don't think I'm ready to make a decision tonight on this. Like I said, I want... And I understand that, but I'm saying, I just wanted to be out there, because I wanna review these options, and I probably have a million questions I'd like to bat off of Pam and stuff to see where we're at, but... Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll buy some time, so Commissioner Brown might can think of his question. If, to the point he made, if we were to reconsider this, wouldn't we take action tonight? I mean, wouldn't we need to, because otherwise, don't they come off, is it July 1st, or is it October?
Enrollment's October.
Okay, so we don't have to make a decision tonight? Okay. Yeah, I don't mind, I think there were a few...
We, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I think there were...
We could make a decision tonight if we voted unanimously to add it to the agenda.
Gotcha. Well, it sounds like Commissioner Brown has a few other questions that he would like to ask, and I support that. But I think Commissioner Price brings up some good points. And I don't even know that, you know, we talk about with Caramont, I don't even know that we would be able to fully implement a narrow network even in a, you know, a fiscal year. I think this is a, that's a process that's gonna take a lot of time, so that's certainly not... Well, I think it's a big deal. It could be very beneficial for our county, very beneficial. It's not the silver bullet that's gonna fix all of our health insurance woes. Pam, the question I've got is, you know, you talked about some people that really weren't supposed to be covered, that were, I mean, are we talking about four, yeah, I mean, so, okay, four to five. We're not talking about dozens, hundreds, and I think that's the point where we're trying to, okay. So, we're talking about a few people that should've come off the plan. Do you think any of that, is it, was it simply oversight? Was there a malicious intent to defraud the county? Or was it just simply they forgot to take somebody off the plan?
You know, as life changes happen, probably the last thing you think about is, what do you do with your insurance? You know, the money's coming out of your paycheck, you're not thinking about it, and it's just sort of automatic. So, you know, over the years, we have seen these types of things, particularly with overage children and separated spouses, where, you know, it's just not something that you think about. And we really aren't planning any disciplinary action, we're just planning on removing them from the plan.
Okay. You know, I think we can certainly reconsider this and maybe bring it up again with some of those thoughts, but I do think there needs to be really big changes. I mean, we can't sustain this, and we've made that point, that, you know, we can't absorb this cost. And so, it's either we're gonna have to ultimately raise taxes just to provide health insurance for our employees, or employee spouses, or have to make some tough decisions. So, last thing, Commissioner Kegger brought up a couple of examples, and I think some of these are very disappointing, heartbreaking examples. Are these outliers, or is this pretty much the common occurrence with those spouses that are losing coverage?
Well, insurance and how it impacts your family is very, very individual, and I think we all have to recognize that. And there are several people who I have talked to and had conversation with that I believe this is going to impact greatly, and that is very sad. And we feel bad about that. We are not unsympathetic and not uncaring in making this decision. But I have heard from other people who literally have covered their spouse because they're covering children, and they already had family coverage. There was no extra cost for them to cover the spouse. See, it was easy. That was an easy decision to make. What they're finding is, their spouse is going to have to move to their employer-sponsored plan. There is no cost to the spouse to be on the employer-sponsored plan. And then, our employee is going to drop from employee and family coverage to employee and children coverage, and they're gonna save $80 a month. So, it's very individual. There are a few people that I am personally aware of that have really bad situations. They're just not good. None of us would like it if it were happening to us, so I fully acknowledge that. But on the flip side, a lot of other people are looking at the situation and going, "Well, it's okay. I'm gonna save some money over here, not gonna cost me too much more over there. It's okay." And I would like to clarify that 3% of an employee's salary is way more than the few dollars that our premium is going up. I don't like to talk about premium increases and percentages, because we get confused on what that percentage is based on. A premium percentage is not based on the employee's salary, it is based on the percentage of premium. So, most of our employees are seeing a very modest premium increase this year to, again, to help offset. And I would just like to say, we have about 1,572 employees, and we have really struggled to keep this plan strong for all of our employees, the people who work for us. And I think we have shown incredible willingness to do that, especially in the years when our employees were not receiving salary increases. The county kept on subsidizing that dependent coverage. We're now up to 88%. I don't think any one of us would wanna go back and say we didn't do the right thing at the time. We did. Our employees were not getting increases, and we were subsidizing that, and we were doing it gladly to help our employees. I think we're just at a point where we are really looking at the sustainability of our plan, and this really was the best solution for us this year. And I will be honest with you, Mark didn't say it, there will be other changes next year if our trend keeps on going up. This was not a fix that was gonna help us for three, four years down the road. This was a one-year fix.
And I think we have to be careful not to become that quote-unquote "garbage" plan that Commissioner Kegger referred to, as the person said their spouse had. We want a strong health insurance plan here in Gaston County.
Yes, that is exactly true. I have been collecting data. I haven't had the time to put it actually into a spreadsheet yet, but it's been on my listserv, and it's been on the finance listserv. And we are seeing that most municipalities, I'm not talking about counties, but most municipalities pay 0% for dependent coverage, and that's what Mr. Browder was talking about, and how high their premiums are. They're paying 100%, and they're mostly insured, and that's easier to do when you actually have insurance than when you're paying the claims, because it's a different dynamic. But I would say that we might be the second highest county in the state for our contribution to dependent coverage, and we're actually very proud of that. I think it's a wonderful thing we did for our employees during those years in not passing on the increases that we could have and probably should have.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I wanna give this full discussion. I think everybody's had a chance to speak. Anybody else?
I have my question. The claims run from the fiscal year, correct? I remember we had one, there was one issue, I think, and maybe that may have been our contract with them that came up in January, but do the claims run fiscal year?
Yeah, the budget, the whole plan is fiscal year. It's actually, is October 1 through September 30.
Okay.
Plan year. The plan year is October 1.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Browder. I'll say one other thing on this, that in this nation, healthcare costs, providing healthcare is a big problem. Some have it, some don't, many don't have any coverage, and they either go without treatment, or they end up on Medicaid. The seniors have Medicare, which we pay for, or have paid for. It's beginning to have a problem with that fund going under with the increase in costs. So, nationwide, we're having a problem. I don't know that you would call Medicare a social program, socialized medicine, in the fact that we pay for it, but I think every citizen in the country ought to have healthcare coverage. I don't know how we get there. I also believe everybody ought to pay something, if they can't pay everything. And so, we have some big challenges. You see, ours is not sustainable, and now we see some of the federal programs are not sustainable. And there's gotta be a coming together of the leaders within this country to address this. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman? I think you've been using too much Medicare all these years.
Well, for a few years, I have.
I'd like to make a motion, if we can get it unanimous, to vote to do what Mr. Price recommended for this year, and see what can happen with Caramont, with the infusion. So, I'll make that as a motion.
Well, I think you can make a motion to open it up for a motion. We have to have a unanimous vote to open it up. So, that's what you're doing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr., Commissioner Kegger has made a motion to open this issue up for further discussion and possible motion. I mean, we need a unanimous vote on that. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a second. End of discussion, hold that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table for further information. I mean, we're...
Well, there's, we're not tabling anything. At least, you know, there's nothing to table yet. It's not, there's no resolution.
So, we gotta have a unanimous?
It's just for discussion, Chad, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of this motion, vote now. All opposed? So, we're not gonna discuss it tonight.
Okay.
All right.
We're running out of time, though. We're not meeting first part of July.
Our business agenda is next, and is there any revisions to the agenda? Or I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Have a second. Second, Commissioner Brown. All those in favor? Next is the minutes of, irregular minutes of May the 26th of 2015, and a special meeting on June 9, 2015. Have a motion to approve those minutes. Commissioner Brown and Second Commissioner Freyler. All those in favor? Oh, well, you need, oh, that's why I gave you that.
Yeah, so I wanna look at page number 15 for the June 9 minutes. Mr. Moore, if we can clarify exactly what happened here, I know we had talked about it, but I'm still not satisfied unless you can give me a good verdict on that. You know, you sent over our board rules, and we added this capital expenditure to the agenda after the fact. So, can you go over, was that the proper way to do it?
Well, it was an unusual way to do it. I would grant that, but the board has the ability to adjust its procedural rules at any time, and so, members have to state an objection and overrule the chair's ruling on the motion. If it is the opinion of any member of the board that the motion's improper, if the chair accepts the motion and puts it on the table, then it's up to a member of the board to object. You're right. Our rules typically say we don't add new items to the agenda, except on a unanimous vote. That's to protect against adding an item of substance that hasn't been noticed to the public. That's the purpose of it. I think the chairman was of the opinion that we were dealing with an item that related to the budget directly, and that he would entertain that motion as an amendment, or as, you know, a budget amendment after, immediately after the adoption of the budget. It was unusual, obviously, and it was, you know, subject to question by the board. subject to question by the board and subject to an objection or an appeal from the board. But other than some discussion that occurred about it, the board ultimately took it.
But so, we didn't suspend our rules. And you sent, you sent the rules to us.
Yes.
That I got. And they were a little antiquated, I might add.
They're quite antiquated, yes.
I guess they were adopted, what, in the '70s?
'79.
1979. So, it might be appropriate to revisit those rules. But the way the rules read, I think they're there for a reason. And it's so that things wouldn't be sprung up on there. And I think this item clearly was. And, you know, and I won't belabor this, but I do want to reiterate my objection to the way it was handled. And I think it was a very improper vote. And I don't think it's a legal vote, to be honest with you, per our own rules.
May I speak to that? I know he has the floor. I just wanted to ask the question. We just sat there and simply stated it had to be unanimous, and I know it wasn't. So, I would have to say that that's going to have to be revisited altogether, I would assume, correct?
Well, actually, excuse me. Actually, it will have to be revisited in the form of a budget change request because, you know, the budget ordinance is only effective as of July the 1st. So, you adopted your budget ordinance in advance of July the 1st, of course. And then you did an amendment to your budget, which will also not be effective until after the budget ordinance takes place. So, we would, I think the court footnoted in your minutes that that budget change request will come forward to the board at the next regular meeting in July.
Does that answer it? Okay. We have the motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. At this time, we have citizens' recognition. And we have two people signed up to, and that is Laura Hamilton and Jenny Brown, if y'all will move over. But we have a procedure here for, what do I do with that?
Oh, you know by heart.
Okay. Well, I think I've got it here somewhere. Here it is. In our citizen's recognition, a portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens an opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the commission and/or staff to answer any impromptu questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Comments will be limited to five minutes. And as I call your name, please step to the podium and state your name and address for this citizen to speak. So, Laura, you're first.
Good evening. Laura Hamilton, 107 Bristol-Combe Court in Gastonia. I want to thank you for letting me come up here tonight. Most of what I would like to speak about is the healthcare insurance. I am fully aware that costs are gone up. I'm fully aware of the employee costs, the health insurance costs, the premium costs, and what the doctors' costs are. I get that. I don't expect the premiums to not go up. I've never expected that. I've been grateful that there was those years that they did not. What I do would like to sit, what I am asking that the commissioners do is reconsider this for these spouses. One of three options. All the spouses get to stay on, no spouse gets to stay on, or new spouses don't get to come on. It is unfair of the 415 spouses, approximately 200 plus or minus are going to get kicked off, and 200 or so get to stay on. We all are encouraging costs. Those of us whose spouses are going to go off, I happen to be a fortunate one. My husband's not going to cost us out of pocket drastically. There's one employee I talked to who's going to be taking the tax penalty because it's going to be cheaper for them because their health insurance offered to their spouse is catastrophic and costs an arm and a leg. So, I would like for you to consider fairness to all of us with spouses who are currently covered, who will no longer be covered. As an FYI, open enrollment is July 20th. So, kind of a decision from the commission, if any changes to be made, needs to be done well before that. So, the employees, we will be aware of that come open enrollment time period. One of the commissioners asked about the change in the expenses that Mark III provided back around the fiscal year 11, 12. They can correct me, but I believe that's probably about the time period the HSA came on board. I've been on the HSA personally for, I believe, it's three years now. I believe it's been on board for four years. Pam, the HR can correct me if I'm wrong. That's probably one of those influences because that was one reason why they brought the HSA on board. Personally, our family, I planned for it. HSA, you must plan for. You cannot go on to the HSA without understanding, and this is education for the employees that needs to take place. Because I know this is coming down the pike. This has been talked about for years. Education of the employees of the cost of healthcare has been something I talked about during the committee meeting that we had back around 2000. And it has not yet fully taken place, explaining the full cost of the healthcare that we have and who's paying what portions of it. Couple of quick notes. Commission has done severe things, not just this board directly, but the board as a whole over the 21 years I've been here. In 2002, longevity was taken away for all new employees effective October of 2002. In February of 2005, the commissioners decided to give themselves insurance if they chose to take it while they were in office. In August of that same year, they took away insurance for any retirees for new hires. The reason for a person to stay with the county pretty much is gone outside of just it's a good place to work or it's convenient for them. And that's slowly been taken away with benefits as well. One of the things that was mentioned was the Charlotte article in there. Lincolnon, which I know is a city, not a county, and they do have a much smaller number of people. Last year, they took spouses who had insurance off of theirs. Beginning January 1, all spouses are off. As well, beginning this year, July 1, I'm sorry, and January 1, no new employee spouse gets to come on. So, yes, I know changes are coming. They have to come somehow. I'm asking that you be fair about the implementation of these changes. And a side note, because I signed up for two topics. One is school safety. Ms. Shay Adams is not here tonight. I know she was here the last time I spoke, and her and I spoke extensively outside. My daughter played softball. She played for Forest View. There are a couple of times I went to Hunter Husk because the commissioners carry the purse string for school maintenance, even though the school board does a lot of that decision-making. Y'all have the purse strings. It is an extreme safety issue at just the softball fields over at Hunter Husk. The fact that somebody has not gone to the hospital because of a foul ball smashing into those uncovered dugouts has been tremendous, and it shocked me completely when I was over there with my daughter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Next, Jenny Brown.
I'm Jenny Brown. I live at 544 Cheryl Farm Road in Lincolnon. I've been an employee with Gaston County since 1991. Today, I was wanting to speak about the spousal carve-out. First of all, I'd like to thank each one of you of your time and consideration on this very important matter. I am the voice of these people. I am the face of these people. I am representing my coworkers who are being affected by the spousal carve-out. The spousal carve-out will create devastating financial effects for families of county employees. I would like to share a few stories of how this is affecting the county employees, and I would like to start with my own. My husband has offered health insurance through his employer, but it will cost $320 per month. Now, my family must choose between spending time together or getting a second job, just so my husband can have health insurance. How would you feel if I was your daughter? I have a coworker that states her husband has offered health insurance through his employer, but it will cost $208 a month. Now, her family is looking to sell one of their vehicles to make ends meet because of the spousal carve-out. Her words verbatim, and I quote, "This is a huge point of stress in my home," unquote. How would you feel if this was your sister? I have a coworker that states her husband has offered health insurance through his employer, but it will cost $225 a month. She told me she does not know how they're going to make ends meet. In her words verbatim, and I quote, "It is a hardship. We are in the working class, just barely making it from check to check. And this will devastate us," unquote. How would you feel if this was your loved one? I have a coworker that stated she completed the audit, and she found that she can continue to carry her 22-year-old stepson, who does not live in the home, but she cannot carry her husband. How is that fair? The spousal carve-out is causing tremendous stress on county employees, who are already working very stressful jobs. The spousal carve-out is causing financial devastation to county employees, who are already underpaid compared to surrounding counties. The spousal carve-out is causing a great hardship to county employees and their families and forcing them to make unbearable decisions just to try to make ends meet so their husbands and wives can have health insurance. Each story I shared with you today is someone's mother, someone's daughter, sister, or loved one. We are not just a number. We are people. We are families. I and my coworkers have been forced to go home and face our families with the news that we are in a hopeless situation. And beginning October 1, we are unsure of our financial future as a family. County commissioners, we need your help. We are begging you for your help. Please help us. We feel hopeless, and without you, we have no hope. Please consider the options that Mr. Price has spoke about, or even, if it's possible, grandfathering in those who are currently employed and currently have spouses who are on the insurance. You hold the vote to our financial future as a family. You hold the vote for the time that we spend together as a family. And you can end the unbearable stress and great hardship this is causing our families. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. That's all that we had signed up for tonight. And our next item is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda. And do we have a second? Mr. Williams, second. Price, making a motion, second.
Was there the opportunity to pull during the...
Yeah, we set the agenda.
No? We did? No, go ahead.
Okay. All right. Have a motion, second, for the consent agenda. All those in favor? We had none pulled. We have none added. And it's time for appointments. And I'll start with Commissioner Fraley.
I have several, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to run through them all, okay?
Yeah.
All right. Health and Human Services Board, Edward Smith. This is a reappointment. Same one, Robert Brown, reappointment. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, reappointment. Tara Conrad, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Phil Ponder, reappointment. This is going to be two new appointments. There are actually three. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Michelle Mills. Sarah, Local Planning Committee, Cherie Wilson. And I do have a reappointment also. Hold on, let me find it. Oh, Travel and Tourism Advisory Board, Chuck Deliger.
Okay. Have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Price, second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Commissioner Brown.
Mr. Price, next. Don't bring him around.
Thank you. I have three reappointments, all to the same board, to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Dixon Gentsch, Jean Weaver, and Eric Vanderkirk.
Second.
Have a second, Commissioner Kegger. All those in favor? Unanimous. Will you, okay, Commissioner Brown.
Counsel on Aging, alternate for Eleanor Beasley. Gaston County Board of Adjustments, Elizabeth Moser. Historic Preservation Committee, reappointment requested by Susan Deal. Jury Commission, reappointment requested by Ann Huggins. Juvenile Crime Prevention, Chris Dobins. Region F Aging Advisory, Eleanor Beasley, alternate. And Workforce Development Board, Tony Ballou.
Thank you. Okay. Have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Price, second. All those in favor? Okay, now Commissioner Williams.
Chris Dobins. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm having to borrow Commissioner Price's iPad. Mine just froze up and said it won't connect to the server. If you can indulge me and go to Commissioner Kegger.
Okay. Commissioner Kegger, you have any?
None.
Okay. Well, I do. I'll get mine. I have three reappointments. The Health and Human Services Board, Dr. Ann Otsai. Juvenile Crime Prevention, Brian Denton. Juvenile Crime Prevention, Phil Coleman. Have a second. Mr. Brown, second. All those in favor?
I've got some, Joe.
Okay, now Commissioner Kegger's next.
I've got four of them. Lucy Penniger to the Historic Preservation Commission. Alan Klonegger, JCPC. Gerald Mack to the JCPC. And reappoint Velda Robinson to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
I'll second. Well, I'll second that. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Commissioner Williams? Are you programmed?
Yeah, I'll take the hard copy.
Folks, we went paperless, but we've struggled. We're working it out.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. JCPC, Melissa Balknight. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Jonathan Fletcher. And for the Workforce Development Board, Dr. Dennis McElhoo.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kegger. All those in favor? Thank you. We have full board appointments. I think mine on the Charlotte Regional Partnership runs out and runs through, what, the end of June? So, I'm willing to accept that if somebody will nominate me.
I move. Second.
Brown and Fraley. All those in favor? And I see... And I see, did we do, we did Jimmy Tanner's in the...
This is board V R.
Oh, for the board, okay. We have Equalation and Review Board, Jimmy Tanner. Could you get a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, Brown and Price. All those in favor? Commissioner Brown has stepped down as family advisory board, and Commissioner Frayley has agreed to serve on that, so I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Brown, all those in favor? You're going to vote, Tom? It's unanimous. Now, you are also, your terms expire in Commissioner Brown on Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. You're willing to stay on that one, aren't you? Okay, I'll make that a motion, and we have a Frayley, Commissioner Frayley, second there. All those in favor? And we have two vacants, so I won't do those. Any others that we missed? All right. You notice I'm using the hard copy here, because I've got it in here, but it, hold on. Any commissioners report, Commissioner Frayley?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brown?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price?
Thank you. I did attend the Gaston Family Health Service Board of Directors meeting in May, and just one item, nothing out of the ordinary happened. I would like to remind everyone that the Dental Mission of Mercy is coming back to Gastonia Bethlehem Church this year, September 25 and 26, if you'd like to volunteer to help with that dental mission where approximately 600, 700 people will be receiving free dental care and be held at Bethlehem Church on that Friday and Saturday. If you'd like to volunteer, there'll be a further notice. If you want to contact Gaston Family Health Service, I'm sure they'll put your name on the volunteer list. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really quick, on the Caramont Board, I appreciate those that came out to the Veterans' Memorial Ceremony. I know Mr. Mathers came to that, and it was a very good event. Actually, former Commissioner Donnie Loftus received the Order of the Longleaf Pine at that event, so very, very cool and well-deserved recognition for former Commissioner Loftus. Very well-attended event, and if you get a chance, next time you go by, it's right near the birthplace, the parking deck, very nice little memorial there for the veterans. Also, they're making a lot of good progress on the emergency department. I know if you go by there, you know, it still kind of looks like a mess, but it's starting to come together, and we're extremely excited about what this is going to ultimately be when it gets done. The pediatric ED is just going to be phenomenal, and we're just real excited about the progress that we'll have once that happens. The one thing I would bring up, I spoke to a couple commissioners, including the chairman, who's not here. Speaking of Caramont, you know, we recently signed a long-term lease with Caramont, and, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about how we use the funds, the proceeds from the organization, from those, that lease. And I know we're going to get an annual, I think it starts at $450,000 that we'll get annually, as Commissioner Keger noted, for health-related expenses. I've talked to a lot of community leaders, people, just citizens, people in the community. I think the expectation is that we will reinvest that money back in Gaston County through various efforts, whether they be community efforts, economic development efforts. And what I would like to do is, similar to what we're doing with the Adoption Committee, is, and I spoke to the chairman, he supports it, unless there's a majority of this board that objects, to put together a committee of community leaders, business owners, and others, where we can meet with maybe Donnie, Donnie Hicks, and just other people to find out what would be the best way we could reinvest that money in the county and give us a good shot in the arm and do some good things for Gaston County. So I'd like to bring that to the board. I know we don't have an official vote, but I just wanted to kind of get the opinion, and I've run it by a couple of you already.
Okay, well, it sounds like a good procedure because it's going to be all kind, there's probably several hundred million dollars' worth of asking for that money, so it might be a good procedure to get some good input. What's, anybody, Frayley?
I'm good with it.
Everybody good with that? Okay. All right, we will, we'll direct the chairman to seek out those, and anybody who wants to make a recommendation, someone to serve on a sort of a task force committee, to bring a recommendation to this board on how we can best use those resources.
And so what we're requesting, I spoke to Chairman Philbeck, is that I would start recruiting some people to serve on that committee, and then go ahead and get the ball rolling so we can come back and make, yes, and we can make recommendations back to this board.
Okay.
So, thank you, appreciate it.
That's fine. Back on my paperless here, is any more reports? We have the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be very brief this evening. I did want to mention just a couple of things, and of course, you've all received my written report, but we did receive the Regional Excellence's reward, or award, rather, for Gaston County's Emergency Communications Center, their project, which was erecting a new communication tower, and that was the Excellence Award for Controlling the Cost of Government. So we're proud of that. I'm also very pleased with some of the economic development projects that we have seen recently, and those are detailed, of course, in the report, but it's very encouraging in terms of the future of the economy of Gaston County. And finally, I think you're going to receive a verbal report about this next month, but you have received the written report from Mr. Dobins with respect to the progress that has been made with access over the last year. And I have to say, I think that is extremely encouraging. Many of the problems that we had identified in previous years have been corrected, and we're just making excellent progress on that front. So that's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Price?
Yes, if you could give us next month an update on what's happening at Lorre Mill and our lease agreement, where we stand?
I would certainly be happy to do that. That is a somewhat fluid situation, but I think we can have some definitive answers for you next month.
Okay. Any other questions of the manager? Okay, county manager, I mean attorney.
No report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other items, this concludes our meeting for tonight. Our July the 14th work session has been canceled and rescheduled to July the 28th, and we'll proceed the regular meeting, 6:00 PM, the Harley Gaston, B, Harley B Gaston Jr., Public Forum Room here at the courthouse. Thank you for watching, and if you have any questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Boff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. And good night, and we are adjourned.